Okay, to continue on with our second readings, there's been a request. Request for Judge Tody who has a pressing issue. Would you like Judge Tody to step forward first?
They said it came back. I didn't pass in front of me.
So going just a little bit out of order. Would you pull up his, Ricky, please? I'll make a motion on this. Budget on the second reading.
Second.
Motion on the floor that has a second for Superior Court six. On second reading, any discussion?
One thirty-four eight sixty-nine, that's my motion.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Cottrell.
I will.
It's a pressing issue. It's pressing. So, Ricky, can you tell me what we did to general fund as of the end of tomorrow, or yesterday?
Yeah, we increased the general fund over this year by just over one point two million dollars.
So, we're at our maximum, wouldn't you think?
Very close to the maximum. And keep in mind, that includes that big IT expenditure and includes the six hundred thousand for share compensation. And it does not include any new employees or visitors.
Gotcha. Fantastic.
Any questions answered, Dan?
It did.
Public defender.
So, I don't know, I think there was some raise or something such like that in there. Seventy, what's our new number here? Seventy-four thousand, that's my motion.
I'm looking at...
The six seventy-seven? No, I'm wrong. I pulled, yeah. No, it's the... Six seventy-seven, four sixty-four, I'm sorry.
Yeah, there's no, there's no changes in any of the three budgets. Motion on the floor, there is a second.
My motion is for all three.
Second on all three.
And a second for all three, everybody agreed?
Yep.
Any discussion?
I don't know what happened.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Thank you.
We're good.
Good.
Thanks for coming, Ken, it's always a pleasure.
All right. County Court, Judge Bradford. What have you got? General Courts first?
Yeah, this looks like, what, three fifty-two, two twenty-eight, that's my motion.
Bottom line is the same, I think I've moved a few dollars around here or there, but the bottom line is the same. And motion on the floor that has a second for the three fifty-two, two twenty-eight, for the General Fund County Court, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Next. Is it the, what's the next one on?
Twelve hundred, public defender.
The, uh, Fund twelve hundred, public defender, I make a motion at twenty thousand.
Second.
Motion on the floor, the second for the twelve hundred, public defender, twenty thousand, requested amount in eighteen, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
And we've got this county user fee jury fund, twenty-five oh six, um, I make a motion for seventy thousand.
Second.
Motion on the floor that has a second for the counter, county user fee jury fund, seventy thousand for two thousand and eighteen, any discussion?
Is this, is this a new fund, Judge?
No. Uh, this one, the, the money that goes into there comes from court costs.
Right.
It's a non-reverting fund.
Right.
And what I'm trying to avoid is not coming back till March.
Gotcha.
When we've spent some general fund money for jury expenses, if we can get it, use it, the beginning of the year, we can save some general fund money.
That sounds great. What's in there, Ricky?
Okay, we'll look that up in just a second. The cash balance is eighty-one thousand, seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars.
Perfect, good.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Onto Superior Court one. Same, same as General Courts, bottom line's the same, few dollars moved, apparently dry cleaning has gone up, so I had to...
Fair enough. One ninety-one, four hundred, I make that motion.
Second.
Motion on the floor, the second for one hundred ninety-one thousand, four hundred, same as two thousand and seventeen, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Thank you.
Take care, Judge.
Judge Alexa.
Judge Alexa. So, we, uh, Judge, I see we've gone on some beds, guardianship for seniors, uh, I think that's, we talked about that last year, right? So, I think this is something we already appropriated.
Yeah, if you notice, the, uh, that's where last year, it was ten thousand dollars. It was for matching grant that's been appropriated and spent, sent out of the state. We have the grant, we're in business with it, and you'll notice the budget that we have presented is ten thousand dollars less than what we spent this year. And, uh, that's the reason for it, we're not asking for that again, it's just a one-time thing. Other than that, it's the same as it was the year before.
One eighty-nine, zero one one is the number, Ricky?
Yes.
That's my motion.
Second.
Motion on the floor that has a second for one eighty-nine, oh eleven, any discussion?
So, next year at the budget time, will you be coming to us with good numbers, Judge?
I think that the numbers you have now are about ten percent more than I started fifteen years ago. And I don't intend to do it again. But I will tell you this, there is a tendency right now in Superior Court to, uh, two murder cases and one child death case.
Right.
And in the two murder cases, they're pa, they're proper cases, the public defender is involved in.
Yep.
One of them is, it's, uh, not guilty by reason of insanity. We've had the examinations and we're going to have a trial, and, uh, we're going to have to have those people in, and it looks like, uh, they'll be spending some money in there. With regard to the next, uh, one of the other murder cases, uh, the, one of the state's witnesses has, uh, one of the investigators apparently has been terminated from the, from the, uh, state employment, and for reasons that may or may not be relevant. But the point is that now the defendant has filed a motion, and he needs to hire his own expert to determine the cause of a fire and all things like that.
Wow.
And the problem is, that could be another twenty thousand dollars.
Right.
And I, I wouldn't ask for that, no, I'm not. It would depend on what happens, things can change, but you can look toward that next year, perhaps.
Gotcha.
Whoever is going to take this, uh, place over here.
Gotcha. Sounds good, Judge, thanks so much for the heads up, and of course, for your time on the bench.
Absolutely.
Thank you for your service.
Well, thank you for yours, too. You don't have an easy job here, as we can see from some of the folks that are here occasionally.
Just a regular night, right?
Any additional discussion?
Again, we're going to miss you.
Thank you.
Come back to visit, I would assume.
Well, I'd better.
If you do, we'll be concerned about it, Greg.
So, we're just here to judge, so maybe I'll be back. But I love you.
Service very, very much appreciated.
Thank you.
Uh, any other discussion? See, none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Safe travels.
Superior Court three.
This is, uh, this is Judge Gents, um, she, uh...
Motion approved.
Yes, she contacted me, she had a conflict, I went through the...
Motion on the floor, the second.
So, as I was saying...
Two hundred and sixty-five.
The judge wanted me to tell her, I want the judge to know that you wouldn't let me explain why she wasn't here.
Please, now discuss, Dan, please.
I got nothing to say.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Superior Court four.
It's like Judge Chittister's at one eighty-three, six twenty-one, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion on the floor that has a second for the one eighty-three, six twenty-one, same as last year, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Okay, good to see you.
Thank you.
Forty.
Forty.
Good evening. So, we had a slight increase here, um, and I'll, well, I'll make, I'll make the, the motion for two thirty-three, six ten, and then we'll talk.
Second.
Motion on the floor, the second for the two thirty-three, six ten, for two thousand and eighteen, requested, any discussion?
So, you're always going up, right?
It's not going up, the, I experienced a shortfall this year due to the increase from the raise at the beginning of the, the year for all county employees. I try to keep my court secretary or administrative assistant at the same base pay.
What's in that fund, Ricky? What, what, what did we budget appropriate and what's been spent?
We're calling it up. This is part of the general fund. I believe right now I have...
Can you introduce me? I don't know who this is.
Oh, my goodness gracious.
I've got to be sure. I start with fifteen thousand. I'm going to be back in October requesting transfer.
This is Councilman, uh, Annie Bozak. She was off in high school.
Welcome, Mozer.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Sorry, Annie.
I, I don't know everybody.
That's okay. I just assumed everybody knows you. You're a very likable fellow.
I appreciate that. That's the first nice thing you said.
Back, back, back to the point. Ricky?
Okay, out of the, her fifteen thousand dollar appropriations she has so far spent, thirteen thousand, one eighty-three. So, to get me through the end of the year, I need an additional approximately thirty-three hundred dollars, so I've got to try to transfer that from other areas of my budget, but then next year I'll be short, and if there's another raise, I'll...
All right, my, my motion stands.
Any other, just, motion on the floor, the second for the two thirty-three, six ten, so we've motioned a second that twice, I think, any additional discussion?
Actually, I didn't motion it a second time, I just said I was sticking with my motion number.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Looking for... So, the numbers are five fifteen, five sixty-eight, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion on the floor that has a second for the five fifteen, five sixty-eight for the two thousand and eighteen requested amount.
No, Judge.
Any discussion?
How are you this evening?
Pichi.
So, a little bit of an increase here, I see, um, but not much, right? You went furniture fixtures, went up just a shade.
That's it, our stuff has fallen apart.
It's time for new fixtures. Seems fair.
Makes, makes sense to me. Chair breaks, get out.
We don't want you sitting on plates.
Any additional discussion? See, none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. And moving on...
Moving right along.
To twenty-two hundred, right on.
So, it looks like on this twenty-two hundred, the budget's down?
Correct.
And, uh, not necessarily, why, why, why is it down?
This is our ADR fund, so these are fees that are paid for four D and for, um, there's another, uh, there's a special, there's a special fee that is given for every single four D and divorce that's filed with the county, and it goes into our ADR fund.
So, the legal services...
It's actually going down.
All right, so legal services, you're taking two thousand to zero, you're not anticipating that money being paid from some other source, that's it, it's...
We have not had to use that, um, line item for several years.
Okay.
Because we have in-house mediators, so we haven't had to go out to...
Great, any motion, seventy-seven, twenty-six?
Second.
Motion on the floor, uh, has a second for the seventy-seven, twenty-six, twenty-two hundred, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Eighty-one, forty.
I would say that, I'll make a motion at sixteen-one, forty-eight, this is a grant, correct?
Correct.
Second. Motion on the floor that has a second for the requested amount of sixteen thousand, one forty-eight, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Looks like your donation fund ninety-one, thirteen, Family Court, is, uh, down seven, uh, ten thousand, seven sixty-five, correct?
Again, this is grant funding.
Yep. So, it's just the grant, the money's going down, okay. My motion's ten, seven sixty-five.
Second.
Motion on the floor that has a second for the ninety-one, thirteen, in amount of ten thousand, seven sixty-five for two thousand and eighteen, any discussion? See, none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Let's talk about the detention sentence. So, it looks like your number's gone up a bit, not horribly, but, um, so, one point five, twelve, eight ninety-seven, uh, up about twelve thousand, nine seventy-two.
Hourly's up?
And furniture and fixtures.
Everybody wants new furniture.
Sorry.
Um, how's your hourly been running?
Hourly, we are already spending probably about five thousand more than we did last year already, um, and we haven't even hit holiday season for my full-timers to take time off. Um, we're also doing so many house rest checks, and that's coming out hourly. I haven't asked for an increase in hourly since two thousand and thirteen.
How's hourly running, Ricky?
Okay, this is this year out of her, what?
So, you've already hit a hundred and thirty-five thousand?
Yeah, she's already spent over a hundred and thirty-five thousand out of the original appropriation of one sixty-three.
Okay, right on. Makes sense.
Can I entertain a motion?
I think I did.
No. Motion on the floor that has a second.
But if you want me to make that second motion, I haven't seen it.
Not sensitive about that. Million, five twelve, eight ninety-seven for two thousand and eighteen, any additional discussion? See, none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Uh, I see we got our codes, budget's up a little bit, uh, forty-eight thousand, three seventy-three, that's my motion.
Second.
Motion on the floor that has a second for forty-eight thousand, three seventy-three...
On general fund, it's fee-based, right?
Uh, correct.
Mandatory?
They're mandatory probation increases.
Yeah, what are you going to do? Any additional discussion?
I want to thank the state for mandating increases and not giving us the money again.
The state would mandate.
On behalf of the employees, we thank.
On behalf of the employees. State of Indiana for unfunded mandates.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Are grants going away, there JDAI grants going away?
Yeah.
So, I'll make a motion at zero.
Second.
Motion on the floor that has a second for the JDAI grant, uh, at zero amount for two thousand and eighteen, any discussion?
What does that mean, besides, there's no more money, Dan?
That means the grant's gone.
Are we funding it somewhere else, are we...
No, I think, I'm going to let her talk.
Did I?
Um, you all have been actually wonderful in regards to support...
You can stop right there. Thank you.
Um, and so, every, we've been able to really reallocate, um, current staff and be able to accomplish what we need to allocate for grant funds, or asking for any additional.
Is there a, possibly a replacement for that, or we don't know yet?
There is no replacement.
Sounds good.
And, and any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
On the juvenile probation, general fund increase, are those, are those mandated increases?
That's all they are, yeah.
Yeah, nine eighty-one, five eighty-five, I repeat my earlier thank you to the state, that's my motion.
Second.
Motion on the floor, uh, for juvenile probation, nine eighty-one, five eighty-five is the amount for two thousand and eighteen, with mandatory raises included, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
So, the juvenile probation ad fee, is that something new?
No, that's, we've, we've always had that.
Why is it, why is it zero, Ricky, under the adopted two thousand and seventeen budget? I mean, I know the big number was twenty-six, four ninety-five, ninety-seven before, down to twenty thousand, five fifty-four, but when I looked at the adopted budget, it had zero.
Looks like maybe an error.
Not zero on the screen, it's just a zero on our...
Oh, our books?
Yep.
Okay, that, thank you, Jeff, that explains. Who did our books? Uh, my motion is twenty thousand, five fifty-four.
Second.
Motion on the floor that has a second for, uh, twenty thousand, five fifty-four for eighteen, any additional discussion? Alls in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Budget twenty-one, fifty, is that a general fund budget?
It is not, it's the probation user fees, which supplement it through.
And that fee's pretty strong, right? Are we, we okay with that fund?
We're doing well, and actually, the only, there is an increase in this, but what I did is I took five thousand out of the administration fee, because that's slowly going down, and it was just a supplemental salary in the administration fee, I switched that individual's five thousand dollars to this one with five in per, and that's the only change.
Gotcha. Ninety-one, six fifty-eight, I second Jeff's motion.
Motion has a couple of seconds for ninety-one, six fifty-eight for the twenty-one, fifty, any additional discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Looks like our adult probation's down just a shade, right? General fund, one million, forty-three, six hundred, that's my motion.
Second.
Motion on the floor that has a second for two thousand and eighteen requested amount of a million, forty-three thousand, six hundred, for adult probation, any discussion? See, none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
On budget two thousand, I know it's, uh, uh, one sixty-two, six oh two, but I think again, that's those mandated raises. That's my motion, that's my finger-wagging motion.
The motion with a finger wag and the second refuses to wag the finger of one hundred and sixty-two thousand, six oh two, uh, for adult probation, any further discussion?
You don't want to hear it.
See, none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
On your adult probation supplemental, so you're moving salaries to other funds, are they, are you moving them to general fund?
No, we actually took a salary out of the general fund because we had two open positions.
Okay.
And we kept one and lost one.
Okay, so the nine, roughly ninety-nine thousand, six eighty-two reduction in the salaries that you're moving to other funds, what funds are those going to then?
We have them in pre-troughies.
Okay.
And then we also have the, uh, community corrections grant, which some of it was in there as well.
Sounds great. Four oh four, three sixty-two is my motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion on the floor that has a second, uh, for four oh four, three sixty-two for two thousand and eighteen, any discussion?
So, yeah, this was a general fund budget? No.
No.
This one?
No.
Oh, no, so you just saved us a hundred thousand dollars?
No.
Which we appreciate, although it's not a general fund. Any additional discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Probation supplemental.
I'll make the motion seventy thousand.
Second.
Motion on the floor that has a second, uh, for the seventy thousand dollars, two thousand and eighteen requested amount, any discussion?
Now, this five thousand dollar increase to salaries, that's not a raise, that's another moving from somewhere else kind of deal?
It is, or adding a supervisor for that department.
So, it's not a raise?
No.
Any additional discussion? See, none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Uh, on ninety-one, sixty-four, I see we have a hundred and twenty thousand, is this a new fund?
Uh, the ninety-one, sixty-four, this is the grant...
Okay.
That we received earlier.
Yeah, that sounds good. My motion's a hundred and twenty thousand.
Second.
Motion on the floor, the second for ninety-one, sixty-four in the amount of a hundred and twenty thousand for two thousand and eighteen, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
All right. That's it?
I just wanted to add, this was Jennifer's first budget cycle, and I think you've done a phenomenal job.
Thank you. Thank you.
Appreciate that.
All right, that's cool.
All right.
That's it?
Court stuff?
Yeah, I think we're done.
Thank you.
Thank you. See ya.
Bless your heavens.
Uh, the voters' registration. The bottom line, voters' registration.
I'm thinking that I'm hoping it's different.
Hello?
Hi.
So, I see you've moved a little bit to, uh, our increased overtime from zero to thirty-five thousand?
Um, actually, that needs to be taken out, that was a mistake. We wanted to move it over to, it actually got moved over to election board, if you pulled, election board's got twenty thousand in it, right? When we were doing the budget, we were supposed to move from voters to elections, so you can actually wipe that out.
So, take that out, Ricky.
So, it should be the same.
I'll make a motion, one seventy-five, nine thirty-six, Ricky's doing that.
That's my fault, because we were using the twenty-fourteen and thirteen budgets to kind of...
That has a second for the same amount in eighteen, is seventeen, a hundred and seventy-five thousand, nine thirty-six, any discussion? See, none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
And then it looks like...
Question board.
So, this is where you've moved, uh, twenty thousand into overtime, and you've moved, you've...
We've upped our absentee boards, we're hoping to add another absentee board in South County next year, hopefully, if everything goes well, um, so we upped that, the sour, uh, the hourly for that, um, twenty thousand, um, because we're hoping to add, you know, two sets of boards, of course, um, and then we added the overtime because it's an election year.
Can you break this out by Democrat versus Republican precincts, so you're going to put these extra?
Um, it's all Republican freestings. Claration, huh?
You have to...
I'm kidding.
Well, I get it, we're coming into an election year, albeit...
We're hoping absentee voting is increasing every year, we're getting more and more early voters, luckily, I love it, because it takes a lot of the stress off the poll workers during Election Day, um, so that's why we're hoping to add more locations and more boards.
So, where are you thinking about?
Um, we're, South County, somewhere in South County, we're hoping like Hebron, Porter,[1496.56] Um, we're, South County, somewhere in South County, we're hoping like Hebron, Porter, uh, Touth, somewhere down there.
I don't like it, I don't like it.
Just that, just that one?
Um, well, just that one must, possibly two, we're, we're not sure, it'll all depend on, you know, like I said, we came to you guys to get our piece for new equipment, so that will all depend on we're able to get new equipment and kind of how everything...
We're, we're still looking.
Well, we haven't seen that equipment yet.
Well, the bids aren't in yet, it's not till the, the bids aren't until the tenth.
This year, maybe possibly?
Possibly, yes. Um, the bids are supposed to be in on the tenth, so, and then we're having our election board meeting that day, and then after that, we will be coming back to see you guys.
So you'll be giving us a heads up on when to come and see the equipment?
Mm-hmm, yeah, oh, definitely, definitely. When the bids are in at the tenth, we want to have them, whoever comes in to have demonstrations and stuff, yeah, so you guys can see the new equipment and kind of what we're looking at.
Please let me know.
Yeah.
Um, all right, so five ninety-eight, six fifty is my motion.
Second.
Motion on the floor of the second for five ninety-eight, six fifty for two thousand eighteen requested amount, any, any additional discussion? See none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
I guess, yeah, you guys had, I've heard there's some discussion with commissioners, putting you guys as non-exempt employees, because you're exempt now, right? We had that conversation last year.
It's funny Jim, I forget about that com, so glad you reminded me.
Thanks.
Have you guys, my understanding is, you guys have had conversations with commissioners to become non-exempt?
Um, I have not. Um, I think Kathy met with one of the commissioners, but I've not had any discussions or heard what, how it's going.
What are you exempt from?
Um, overtime.
Fair Labor Standards Act and overtime.
They decided in the middle of last year that we worked that, like, September, August, September last year.
There were some, I'm not going to spend a tremendous amount of time, but there were some, before these changes to the Fair Labor Standards Act, changing the threshold for someone to be exempt, so we kind, the commissioners weighed in and indicated who they believed to be based upon our, the job descriptions and what have you, we could argue that, they were blue in the face, but, uh, those employees that they believe to be exempt, uh, so we went through and addressed them as either exempt...
So they're salary employees?
Right.
Thank you.
So, pros and cons, and then ironically, they really didn't implement all those Fair Labor Standards Act changes, so that's kind of interesting.
That's what I'm wondering, if it was going to be revisited by commissioners?
No, I haven't heard that it is, so I don't know. You guys would know more than I would.
You'd think, really?
Yeah, I would hope. You see them more than I do.
Um, well, I guess if we get some, I know, yeah, there was, if we get some, if we get some indication, we can address that, but if not, I'm not, I mean, it's not our question.
We can always come for additional, you guys have those, right?
Yeah. So, okay, that sounds great.
Not anymore.
Very good, I'm good night.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. So we've got the clerk. We do.
You have a question though?
Yes.
Before. Would it be possible to take one of my positions and put it in on hourly? It would save substantial amount of money with the benefits, one of my employees just went over to Judge Chittister's court, and right now, if you look, I don't know if you're aware of it, but my budget in two thousand eleven, the total, my total salaries was one thirty-five two two six one, and my total budget this year, two thousand eighteen, is one thirty-four eight zero three four, so I've dropped substantially, and I do plan on dropping a couple more positions with this, um, online filing, e-filing, things of that sort, but until we get some of these processes resolved, I'd rather just put a part-timer in...
Yeah.
Instead of a full-timer, which would save benefits, so if we can move one of those positions down, which would be the lowest one at thirty-two seven, and move it over to an hourly, I would appreciate that.
This is a deputy records caring?
Correct.
So Vicki, you got what she's doing?
Mm-hmm.
How much increase in hourly?
I have nothing in hourly now, so I'd be going to thirty-two seven because I took it all out. I went to zero, so I'd be taking the position of thirty-two seven and moving over to hourly.
Be the same bottom line?
Correct. In fact, my, like I said, my bottom line for my total budget is less than just my salaries in two thousand eleven.
So Vicki, I guess the, the bottom line's the same then, one, one three eight zero seven three four? No.
One three...
No.
The bottom line should be the same, but we're fixing the salary line right now.
All right, one three, one three four eight zero three four.
Correct.
Yeah, that's my motion.
Motion on the floor that has a second for a million three forty-eight zero thirty-four, uh, with the changes noted, uh, any discussion?
Right on. So that'd be the one less person on the insurance, maybe?
Well, that's what that boiled down to. Right now, it's three vacant positions that I'd prefer not to, you know, fill up, I don't have to, which is a, a savings, what is it, eighteen or nineteen, seventeen eight was what last year's benefits were, so you're talking about sixty thousand dollars just in positions alone.
Yep.
That's not including normally, I revert at least seven, uh, fifty to seventy-five thousand back to the general fund on a yearly basis.
And we really like that, we like when you do that, Karen.
Well, I do that for the shares department, they need it more than I do.
Any other discussion? See none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Oh, I guess on the clerk's perpetuation, seventy-four three ten, I make a motion on that.
Second.
What's in that fund, uh, Vicki?
It's not general, it's not general.
What's in that fund, Vicki?
There is, well, she does that, there is a motion on the floor that has a second for the seventy-four thousand three ten, continue on with discussion.
Now, keep in mind, the reason that that is going up is due to the fact that we are increasing our size of our monitors, so we can go with the split screen to thirty-two inches instead of a twenty-four inch, and then right now, we have the virtual systems, and I'm trying to get the hard drives instead of the virtuals because it's some concern about the virtuals.
So your, your perpetuation fund has, uh, a lot, three hundred and twenty-six thousand.
Yes, it does. I'm not a spender.
No, you're not. I'm wondering if that thirty-two thousand seven hundred that we had in the general fund for your hourly, could that, is that something that's...
You're not allowed to pay, not allowed to pay monies for individuals out of that. I can do anything I want for records itself, but it was decided by the state board of accounts that you cannot pay for employees.
So my, my, I mean, if I can finish my thought, so the thirty-two thousand seven hundred that we applied for hourly doesn't fall within your criteria where, like, you have your hourly down to thirty thousand in your perpetuation fund, the person that you are replacing with hourly out of general fund doesn't fit within your perpetuation?
I will not have any people coming out of the perpetuation fund.
All right, so the clerk's perpetuation fund that has hourly of forty-five thousand down to thirty thousand, for example, what kind of hourly is that for?
I probably will not be using that at all now that we have it out of the general fund. State board of account had mentioned the fact that you could not take salaries or hourly out of, not allow paid employees, although we have been doing it for years.
Yes, I was going to say, but you have it in.
We have been doing it for years, but state board of account made a recommendation that it not be taken out.
Made a recommendation.
And you can take it out of that, I mean, it can't be used for anything else, it's only the clerks. The perpetuation fund has, of course, the recorders as well as the clerk's office.
Right.
And what can it be spent on?
It can only be, the maintenance of records itself. So like when we buy the shelving units, or we buy new binding for our eighteen hundred, our books that are from the eighteen hundreds, we can use it for that, or if we're using it for like data processing or things of that sort, scanning, because we're going to buy some scanners too, it's the maintenance of the documentation.
What if you guys never spend it and it grows to a couple million, does it have to stay in there? Can it be moved out?
Well, it can only be used for rec, clerks.
It's still...
Yes, it's not a general fund.
Obviously, where Dan's going is, we have to look at ways to release the pressure from spending the general fund and move things into, you know, not just yours, but other offices, they're different.
That's why I was asking too, yeah.
Well, and as of right now, like I stated, I'd prefer not to open, um, fill those other two positions that I have open because I have three positions now, so if I don't have those other two positions after the first day of the year, after things start running smoother with reference to the online and the e-filing, and the processing of eliminating conventional files, then I'll be able to eliminate those positions permanently, and as well as that'll be the additional funding for the benefits, so you're talking about fifty thousand dollars, maybe a reduction of a hundred thousand total.
When we convert the old files over to a new medium or a new way of storage, do you pay out of the perpetual fund, or do you pay out of your own salary?
That, actually, the scanning and some of those other items with reference to handheld scanners and things were received by Odyssey, which was a state grant, um, right now, we're looking at different scanners though, and it will be coming out of the perpetuation fund.
Well, I was just curious about the actual physical act of doing that, if you're paying the employee to transfer documentation, are we paying out of our general fund, or are we paying out of the perpetual fund to do that?
Well, see, that's the thing, the, the scanning of the item itself is part of the process of the employee. What happens now is a document comes in, it's e-filed, and so it comes through, so it automatically posts to the system, what we are doing is taking the older records, and we have to go through and attach that document to each event code, let's say it's an appearance of an attorney, you have to make sure that that appearance is scanned and attached to that event code.
So that it's already processed with the current...
Most of it is. Correct.
So I have that motion, seventy-four three ten, if you guys are interested.
Second, any, any additional discussion on that motion?
I just wanted to add that Karen, Karen's bottom line has been reduced, 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 and the state board of accounts is giving her a wrist slap to say, don't do this anymore, and she didn't want to.
Well, I just want to say that I really appreciate that you and Dan got along well.
Karen and I, Karen and I are friends, we get along, we go along, we get a little tense, we just don't know each other.
Any, any additional discussion?
You just can't call me Auntie Karen.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, motion carries. Last but not least.
Four D.
Yep.
I'll make a motion.
Second. Motion on the floor that has a second, uh, four D, seventy-seven thousand nine eighty-six, any discussion?
Yeah, sounds great to me, I'm all in favor of it.
See none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Karen.
It's been a pleasure.
I don't know what to say.
See what happens?
I'm Andy, by the way. Nice to meet you.
I'm seeing Ralph.
It's Dan who introduced me. Well, you guys are the same party, I'm not over, dude, I'm your man.
Did you just ask me to introduce myself?
I introduced myself because you didn't do it.
You better start going with the function.
Almost.
I would say the same with you, my friend. At least Dan picked out a secret. You just have a good night. So we want to know what the general fund is?
Right. You have so far increased at one million two hundred and seventy-two thousand six hundred and thirty, and the total stands at thirty-nine point three, you're still at target.
We got two hundred thousand in the bowl.
You're a big spender.
I don't feel like we should be doing that.
So all those in favor, aye?
I'm sorry.
Motion carries.